Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Board meeting to order. It is 6:32 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
Our Father, I mean, Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the first meeting that I begin chairing, so you can see that the nerves are definitely apparent. Yeah. So let's move on to approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Senra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Nay?
Before you proceed, I just want to announce that Board Member Julia is on his way. He'll be about 20 minutes.
Perfect. So I'm gonna move to change the order of the variances that we're gonna hear this evening. So we're gonna move, we're gonna move the second one to, we're gonna call that one first, which is variance ending in 0106. Is that correct? That's the second, okay. All right. So, Town Attorney, you wanna?
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, wait.
Well, actually, I think we need a motion, and then we need it to be approved. So...
I'll make a motion to move the order of the variances that we're gonna hear. Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Nay? Okay. The motion passes.
Prior to moving on to the item, we do have public comments. I don't see anybody online, but if anybody's here to speak on public comments, you have three minutes to speak. You just state your name and address for the record, and you can stand up at the podium. No public comments.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to swear the applicant, if you can stand and raise your right hand. All applicants, please.
Do you swear to say the truth, and only the truths will help you, God? You may be seated.
Mr. Chair, the next item that we're going to be hearing, we're gonna be hearing this evening, two quasi-judicial items. The first one will be the variance 2024-0106. At this time, if any of you have had any ex-party communications that you have not fully disclosed to the clerk, this is your opportunity to do so. Being none, please advise that the items on the board's agenda are quasi-judicial in nature. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. The order will be, staff will present first, and then the applicant will have their time to present their presentation. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to have, be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of 10 copies. Further details of quasi-judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. And this is a variance 2024-0106. The applicant is Juan Carlos Gonzalez, and the location of his property, 16453 Northwest 83rd Place. Presenting for the town will be Ms. Olivia Shawk.
Hello. So for this variance that is there seeking to allow a canopy to project 18 feet into the rear yard, where a maximum of seven is allowed, and we're currently recommending approval with conditions, the conditions being that the approval is substantially consistent with the above-mentioned plans, and that no other accessory structures be permitted on this lot after the fact. So this is a single-family residential home in the Royal Oaks 5th Edition neighborhood. This is on a very standard lot for the neighborhood. Currently, they, ooh, here we go, they comply with items A, B, C, D, and they do not comply with items E, F, and G. So is there any questions? Happy to answer about any of these.
Questions?
This particular, Chair, this particular pergola has not been built yet, right?
No, no. This is a canopy that has not been built. This is, they're coming in ahead of time.
Okay. I have one question to the Chair. It says that in the letter that Mr. Gonzalez wrote, it says, "The normal setback for the property line is 4/6. I am asking for 1 foot variance in order to have an 11/6." And then it says about cutting, that the structure is being built with 18-foot panels, he doesn't want to cut them to 17, but the measurement, 11/6, is to the column, not to the panel. So it's confusing in this letter, which is, which is the actual setback? Is it the edge of the, of the panel, or is it the edge of the column?
I believe the 11 feet 6 inches is to the edge of the, is it to the edge of the roof of the pergola, or the canopy, I mean?
It's to the column.
It's to the column, yes.
There's usually an 18-inch...
The setback, is it setback to the edge of the column? Or to the edge of the column?
The setback is to the edge of the column. There is always an allowance for 18 inches for an overhang.
So these actually have more than...
All right. And just so, for, as a matter of explanation, at the time when the applicant wrote that letter, he was under the impression that he was gonna be able to use the attached pergola. I don't know if you remember, I think a couple of years ago, we passed some, a new ordinance where smaller backyards would be allowed to do, instead of having a detached pergola, they would be allowed to do an attached canopy, and then be able to encroach onto the required rear yard, half of that distance, right? And it resulted in many of them 12 and 1/2 feet, which is where he's discussing those 12 and 1/2 feet, on a 25-foot rear setback. Upon further inspection, though, as we were trying to process the application, the, his backyard is actually 27 inches, 27 feet.
27 feet 6 inches.
Correct. So technically, it doesn't fall under the 25 and under requirement that the code has, and that's why we sort of had to rewrite the application to what he's requesting right now, because he doesn't follow that 25 and less. Does that make sense? It still sort of falls in the same sort of explanation that we did at the time when we passed this ordinance way back when, and I think you were all here at that time, where we discussed that it was preferable to the town to have attached pergolas, because they're farther away from the setbacks, and, you know, they're usually a little smaller by, you know, less than the 350 square feet that you usually would have for a detached pergola. So they're all a little preferred, and that's why he's seeking for this variance instead of for, does it, am I making sense? Yes, I think you're all nodding yes? Okay, okay.
Any further questions for town staff? Thank you. Would the applicant wish to present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Juan Carlos Gonzalez, 16453 Northwest 83rd Place, Miami Lakes 33016. Well, you heard the story. I'm not gonna get into why I said a foot and not a foot unless I have to, and explain it, but I think the recommending for it, so basically, I'm gonna be, the pergola's gonna be 18 feet. And to answer the question, it is to the column. The setback is to the column, it's not to the edge of the, because that's what the thing said.
Yeah, my question to the Chair was because you're talking about cutting it back, and I couldn't understand why you would be cutting it back.
But because there's an overhang, and I would have to cut the panel. That's why. Because the overhang can only be so big, so I would have to cut the panel. Does that make sense? I'm not the architect here, I'm just...
I thought the overhang was 2 and 1/2 feet, you said? But 18 inches, this is more than that now. It's about 4 feet. That's why I'm like, I had the question, you have it, you have it.
It's 2 feet, it's not 4.
2 feet, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you're 12 feet awake, it's hard to see it in this small...
Sir, I believe you're looking at the ones that have the signatures on them?
Yeah, there's a survey there.
One that looks a little bit better, that you can see a little better. Those are the ones that he submitted with neighbor signatures, so they are printed a little smaller.
16/6. I was just trying to figure out, the edge would be 16/6 from the wall. If it's 27/6 to the wall, on the longest part, and you're 11/6 off?
Right.
It would be like 16/6, okay.
Do we have any questions, any additional questions for the applicant? You may be seated, thank you. Is there anybody here that wish to speak on behalf of this item, in support or against? No? Okay. So, I'd like to hear from my fellow board members. I happen to live in Royal Oaks, I'm on the board for the HOA, and I put some weight on the fact that the ARB, which is the Architecture Review Board, did approve it, so, you know, that definitely holds weight for me. Not to mention that town staff with some caveats, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve it, because the association has approved it already, and the staff is willing to approve it, and I'll make a motion to approve it as per the staff's recommendations.
I'll second. All in favor?
I have to call the board.
She's gonna call the board.
Board Member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Board member Leoncio? Vice Chairperson Senna?
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, congratulations.
And as an aside, since that you're being inclined to approve this in this fashion, I would suggest that maybe at the next hearing, that the next time we meet, we discuss whether or not you make, want to make a recommendation to the council to amend the language on this section of the code to allow yards larger than twenty-five feet to abide by this twelve and a half foot setback.
Yeah, the, the ordinance, and this all, this happens in every city. The ordinance needs some work, it's, it's a little vague. There, there's two ways to have interpreted this ordinance and we went around the back and forth. Frankly, the way I interpreted it, he only needed a foot, but it depends on how you interpret it. The way, if you interpret it the way staff's been interpreting it in the past, you know, they're right. He needed seventeen, eighteen foot variance. If you interpret it probably, another way of interpreting it, he only needed one foot. But I didn't want to say any of this until you guys voted and discussed. The, that section of the ordinance needs to be tweaked because it could be interpreted two ways, but it doesn't matter, you know. And we'll have something for you guys next week to rec, next month to recommend to take a look at.
The, the other thing that we, we discovered actually, right, Mr. Estasi discovered is the actual definition of, of setback and how it works throughout the code is, is kind of confusing as to-
Yeah, in other words, is setback the amount? Is setback by definition? I, I'm sure you guys know there's a table where all the, you know, if it's, I don't know, what is this? RU one, it's twenty-five feet. Well, if you read this ordinance, it says the setback, but does that mean the actual distance from the property line to the structure? Or is it, this is a property within RU one, so the setback is twenty-five feet? If, if you look at that ordinance, there's two ways to read it, so we need to clear that up. We need to clear that up, we'll, we'll bring it before you, for you guys to recommend and then we'll bring it before the council. Alrighty?
Thank you, town attorney.
You guys take care, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you, you too. Alright, I think that brings us to the next one, but we're gonna have to hold off until Mr. Julia arrives.
He's on his way. He's still on his way, I don't know if you guys want to take a quick recess?
Yeah, so, so just so everyone in the audience is informed, we, we, we had enough, we had quorum to hear the, the item that we just heard, but because we have one of our board members that has some sort of relationship with the next item, he has to recuse himself, so we, we don't have quorum, so we're waiting for one board member to, to arrive. He should be here any minute, so I'm gonna ask to, to have a five minute recess.
I'm officially the oldest person.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We have, town staff is gonna present. We're, we're now gonna hear a variance ending in zero zero eight four.
Let me, let me read the disclosure again. And also, at this time, if any of you have any quasi, I'm sorry, any ex parte communication you'd like to disclose, also if you have any conflicts that you wish to disclose and need to recuse yourself, now would be the time to do it.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Mr. Leoncio, something that, again, I, I probably should have mentioned to you beforehand is when you get the chance, just go ahead and just, if you can dock it or memorialize your recusing and send it to the clerk.
I have extra papers here if you need it.
You have it? Okay. So she'll, she'll provide it to you, just put it out and, and then we'll wait for Mr. Leoncio to leave the premises. And then, or, Mr. Leoncio, if you want to, you can also just go right back in here if you'd like to, whatever's-
Okay, I'll go to the lobby.
Whatever's most com, more comfortable for you.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna read the quasi judicial disclosure again. Okay, so the next matter that we're going to hear is a matter twenty twenty four zero zero eight four. Please be advised that the following items on the board's agenda are quasi judicial in nature. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and the staff have made their presentations on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross examination. If you do not wish to ha, be either cross examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross examine witnesses, but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of ten copies. Further details of the quasi judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. This is again matter variance two thousand twenty four zero zero eight four. The applicant is A N L Rodriguez Diaz the six LLC. The location is one four zero one zero Cypress Court, Miami Lakes, Florida, three three zero one four. For the town, Olivia Shock will be giving the presentation.
Hello again, so this variance is seeking, they're seeking two variances. One to allow a swimming pool to encroach fourteen feet one inches waterward of the top of slope and another to allow a swimming pool waterward of the top of slope or tie line. So they're proposing to build a swimming pool in their rear yard. The home is sighted a hundred and twenty feet from the water's edge at its furthest point and ninety at its nearest. So they're, they're requesting a variance to allow, you know, fourteen foot one inch encroachment. Instead encroachment would leave about twenty feet of unencumbered slope area at the narrowest point beyond that, until the water. This is a home that's situated on Lake Adele in Miami Lakes and we are currently recommending denial for this proposal as they do not comply with any of the variance criteria except for D, that it can be approved without causing substantial detriment to adjoining properties, they do comply with that one. So yes, questions?
Any questions for staff?
Through the Chair, I have a question. Is an addition also being done here, are rooms being added? Because I'm looking at the original survey that the county has here.
Yes, they are, they are currently under, they are currently undergoing an addition on the, the home.
They're adding a master bedroom and changing the, okay. Looks like they're adding two rooms and a master bedroom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions for?
I believe the applicant wanted to submit some letters.
Do you have letters?
Yes.
Would you, would you take them to the, our deputy clerk? So then he would be compliant with two?
Yes, correct, and he'd be compliant with A as well.
If, if the letters are in favor of, we don't know yet.
Wow, they look like form letters.
Okay, I guess if, if we need to call you back up, we will at that time, thank you. Does the applicant wish to present at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andres Rodriguez Diaz, the address is one four zero one zero Cypress Court, Miami Lakes, Florida. We are doing an addition to the house. We're planning to move into Miami Lakes. All of our children leave here, grandchildren, and we are doing an addition to bring it up to, up to date. And the pool, I wanted the pool to have some distance from the house to avoid the grandchildren from, how do you call this, accidentally getting in there. So we drew up our plans and we have a family room on one side and everything else is within the, the setback. Unfortunately, the pool we're replacing it needs some support from the, from the board. For items, for the items that were not compliant, I spent some time going through the neighborhood and there are a number of pools and structures that are close to the lake, on that lake. And then from the other point of feedback about the, the wall, the, the pool, we're planning to do an infinity pool or a green wall with vegetation like yedra, something that grows right on the, on the wall that would be appealing. I met with a number of neighbors, both of my neighbors on both sides support it and the neighbors on the other side of the lake actually were looking forward as it, it probably is going to look better than what it does today. Okay? I haven't, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I, I do have one if, so as we, as we chew on this, I always like to ask if there's a possibility that you would be open to, if we, if we offered a, a variance, perhaps not a variance to what, to the total amount of feet that you need, but somewhere in the middle, would you be open to that?
I would be open to that if that's what the board recommends, okay?
Thank you.
Through the Chair, you said that there were properties on that lake that had the pool, but I'm looking at them here. Do you know which ones in particular, because I'm looking here and they all kind of fall right along the line that I'm watch, that I'm seeing here, that they're all running right along the, the tie line. They're not past the tie lines, the pools that I'm looking at here.
I, I looked at it on Google Maps and I saw-
Oh, I'm looking at it on the county, on the county website.
Okay, I, I looked at it on Google Maps and I just saw structures and water closer to the, closer to the lake than-
Here, you see, I don't see any pools past the tie line. This one house here has-
Seventy-one twenty-one bamboo would be one that might.
There's one that it looks like they has a jacuzzi past the tie line.
Yeah, yeah. Through the Chair, so it seems that, so your, the proposal is to do basically an eight by eight jacuzzi on one side and then a sixteen by eighteen on the rest? So that would give us a total of twenty-six feet?
Has a jacuzzi there.
From beginning to end of, of the pool jacuzzi and stuff?
I believe that's correct, sir. My wife and I looked at existing pool models, right? And the soft slope in and the jacuzzi sort of like prevents somebody from falling. So that was the one that gave the biggest buffer.
Like a beach entrance. Because the, just as an observation, if instead of you going twenty-six feet straight back onto the lake, you did the pool the other way, it would be less of an encroachment beyond the tie line. And I'm just seeing that, I'm not saying that that can or cannot be done, I don't know if that was contemplated.
I appreciate the observation, I was trying to make the narrowest encroachment on the lake.
That's one way of looking at it.
So-
Man, it's so hard to see in these little maps, sorry.
Would you know how many feet you were anticipating moving from the covered terrace to the beginning of this pool?
The covered terrace, if I'm mistake, if I'm not mistaken, was twelve feet.
Yeah, the cur- according to this, the covered terrace is gonna be twenty two by twelve. So I'm, I'm assuming it's twelve feet towards the, the lake?
That's why...
Cause it looks narrow.
Ag- agreed, so I, if, I think it's the chair, Mr. Fernandez, right? When he recommended that if, if it was not as deep, I would basically have to pull back the covered terrace.
The covered terrace is there now or is that something that you built?
It's new.
It's new?
Um, the master bedroom on the...
Other side is what you're building.
On the left side is new, and the family room on the right side will be new.
The kitchen also?
Yes, the kitchen in the middle, yes.
The kitchen also is being built?
Family room, kitchen, and master.
Yeah, you completely reconfigured the property, obviously.
I'm sorry.
You completely reconfigured the property, obviously.
Well, I'm, I'm try- I'm trying to enjoy the lake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Makes sense.
So if you got a view from the family room of the lake?
And the kitchen.
And you get a room from the master bedroom?
That's good design. So in essence, what you're asking for is not fourteen feet, one inch for the whole thing, it's just, for the entire property, it's just obviously for the sixteen feet. Would the rest of the paving around the pool be admit, be not a variance? Because it's less than two hundred and fifty square feet.
If it's less than two hundred and twenty five square feet and less than eighteen inches above grade, which the full, all the way at the edge of the pool, I think we calculated it to be two feet? Right, just under two feet, so potentially all decking around it would be, uh, less than eighteen inches above existing grade, which would comply. So that's why it's not an additional variance. Particularly if he does an infinity edge, in which case that portion that would be protruding a little bit more would be eliminated, so...
Right.
Um, I just have a question for the applicant. I do see, um, the letters, I'm concerned with the neighbors on both sides of you. Um, the addresses look like they are the adjoining properties, but just confirm that?
Yes.
Is it, uh, they're, they're both in favor?
Mr. Marden, um, Madden is on one side and Miranda is on the opposite side. And I tried to put notes on the addresses, cause the lake has a very long part right there. Some is leaning pine, some is bamboo.
Right.
And there were, those were the neighbors across the lake.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, they're the property owners on both sides and in front.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and they are, I just checked it.
Yeah. Me too, um, that's what I have here on the property. Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions for the applicant, I'll, I'll conclude that. Here, thank you very much. Yes?
Thank you.
So I'm looking to my G C to, um, to help me move, move it, so if we're gonna grant the, uh, the variance for it.
Can we bring Leonsio as a consultant to the board?
I think he might already be.
This is a...
Non-voting consultant.
It's tough because of the amount of yard that's left in the back. When I look at it, towards the water, there's not that much left. When you look at where the water is and the property and how much are coming out?
Right.
They're coming way out.
This ques- I have a question for, for Susana, and I know that each application is, is viewed separately and on, unto itself, but we have, have we ever given a variance for that amount of feet into the, the water line?
I believe the largest one you've given was fourteen feet? Or fourteen and a half, I seem to remember.
Yeah.
On a pool, on a pool, it was horizontal.
Correct. And it was a longer, like, across.
Right.
Remember that there is no such thing as precedence, each case...
Yeah, 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 no, I'm clear on that.
Stands on its own merits.
Yes, yes. So I, I will be open, or at least for, for discussion's sake, to see if we can come up with a variance that he is, we allow him to go into a few feet, but pull him back a little bit.
Yeah, I mean...
But you can make the motion so we have a discussion, so, if you want.
If you want, I mean, I, I could make a motion, um, cause I'm, what I'm thinking is that maybe they may flip the pool the other way. I understand there may be a little bit more, but the grade is not too bad in that area? Like, the closer you get? Cause you're saying at the end is two feet?
Correct, the height of the ex...
So I mean, I, I would make a motion to, they're asking for fourteen feet. Um, I would make a motion to accept a variance with nine feet encroachment. I think that that would give more flexibility and still allow the overall construction, maybe flip the pool the other way. I think you'll probably be within the nine feet.
I'll second it for discussion.
I mean, that, that sounds reasonable. And then they can choose whether or not they wanna continue that same layout or, or turn it, but we just give them the variance of the, the amount of feet that we're willing to...
Correct.
You mean with the flexibility of turning the pool ninety degrees?
If they choose, if, if they choose.
Or making it shorter.
Or, or making it shor- or making it, yeah.
The thing is that, I mean, honestly, I, I do believe that the applicant has tried to minimize, because eighteen feet, and nowadays, you, probably most people would probably put a jacuzzi somewhere, someplace, uh, in a pool when you're doing a new pool.
Well, it's set up for a jacuzzi between the two lower areas, if you look at it, in the center in between, it's set up to have a jacuzzi.
But I gue- I guess the typical pool is fifteen by thirty.
Yeah.
This is, the pool area, even, including the jacuzzi is not even thirty feet. So they've already tried to minimize lengthwise, I'm just, you know, now if I'm saying, don't go fourteen, go, they would be stuck with an even smaller pool, so I would, at least in my motion, I'm thinking, give them flexibility to reconfigure it, uh, but not going the whole fourteen feet as that. I don't think that that's compatible with other homes in the area, from what I've seen from a bird's eye view, not that I've measured anything.
The size of the pool is eighteen by eighteen, right?
I think it says here sixteen by eighteen on the pool area, and then the jacuzzi was eight by eight, uh, which would be another eight feet, so it'd be tw- it's basically twenty six feet.
It's hard to tell.
It's sixteen by twenty six, overall.
I should've brought my big math, hmm, yeah, we just...
Yeah, well, I, I, I did it on the, my computer. Sorry. Yeah. I don't know if you want...
If he made, if he would make it a little wider, if he would make it a little wider, he could make it a little wider. Sixteen by eighteen, okay. Sure. Yep, thank you, sir. If he would like, if he would make it like eighteen by fourteen, he's wider, a little wider, instead of... You see, it's the same kind of size of pool that he wants, he's got the two entries on either side of, of the jacuzzi, but it's not such, so, such an encroachment, still giving him the same basic size pool. I don't wanna redesign his... No, I don't wanna redesign his, uh, his layout, nor the architects at that point, but I think nine feet's gonna be tight, you know? The nine feet would be... I would go twelve, you know? I would be more in favor of twelve, because nine feet's pretty, pretty short form there, even if he turns it the other way.
I'll accept a friendly amendment, I'm...
I'm, I'm discussing and see how you all feel about it.
I, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, yeah.
So, I'll be fine with that. I would make an amendment, instead of nine, to make it twelve, you know? And then he can actually, twelve out, and you can make it a little wider, if you want, instead of going so far out into, into the lake area.
Yeah, that, that would be up to him.
Right.
Up to the ar- the architect.
I was looking at him when I said that, that he could make it a little wider, just not go so far out into the lake.
Right, but twelve feet would give him quite a bit of...
Would give him quite a, would give him a lot of, a lot of leeway, yeah.
Right.
He goes, also bring it a little closer to the covered terrace.
I'll make a friendly amendment that, uh, instead of nine feet, we go, allow him twelve feet encroachment into the, uh, into the lake area past the tie line.
I'll accept the amendment.
So, so somebody needs to second it?
Robert will second it, and all in favor?
We need, we need to read the, uh...
Roll call.
No, well, I was, I was just, I was just... I, I thought we were just gonna vote on the amendment.
Well, yeah, vote on the amendment and then you guys...
Got it, got it, okay.
So, on the amendment, Board Member Julia?
Yes.
Board Member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Senra?
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez?
Yes.
The amendment passes.
So now you're back to the main motion.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to, to actually...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, so...
Ready to vote?
Roll call.
Board Member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Board Member Julia?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Senra?
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Congratulations.
So just to clarify, you get, you have approved twelve feet with flexibility to rearrange the site plan, um, to whatever, whether he wants to turn it sideways or he wants to just push it closer to the home or whatever his choice, got it?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, come on out, come on out.
We are all old here.
Would, would somebody please...
Miss Alonso, do you want...
I know you were discussing, I, I didn't hear the actual...
Do you wanna go, instead of going fourteen feet out, you go twelve feet out, but you can make it wider if you want.
Okay, that would be excellent, thank you, I appreciate...
So that you would, you would have basically the same sized pool, but not encroach so much into the lake.
Uh, I appreciate the design too. My wife was like, when you were saying that, she goes, we could do this, and, so that worked for me.
Okay.
I appreciate the discussion and the feedback, so make sure I understood, I'm restating something. You're approving the variance to twelve feet, right?
Yes, sir.
And, um, I can make the pool a little bit wider in order to get, um, still a decent-sized pool?
The same square footage?
For, for six grandchildren to be in there.
Additional square footage, so you get, you can get the square footage, and the part where, where you have the waterfall, it doesn't count into the, uh, into the...
Thank you very much, Ward, sorry to make you repeat it, but I couldn't...
No, not at all, not at all, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any administrative items to share or discuss?
Uh, yes, I would like to say, uh, and remind you all that we will not be having a May meeting. Our next meeting will be June, am I correct? Yes, June. Correct. No matter what, there will be not, no May meeting.
No May meeting.
Yes, cause it's a mess, it's, just makes a mess out of the calendar.
Okay.
It is, uh, seven twenty P M, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.